Hi Joe, how are you? Feeling better? Good.
There was no torn on the morning here in the areas.
Wow, is that my room?
I sent you guys your pads.
You're yours?
Rema, tell me when would be a good time to come get the maxi? I don't know.
Come get the one huh? Your maxis? Oh, you just have to let me know when it's for.
No, you guys, the processes, the sponsors need to be there because you guys are very excited. That's okay. We can do it on the 27th or the 12th. We'll have to reach on the 12th. You got Rema Feller, you got three minutes. What are you doing?
I want a water.
This committee took my daughter up to Midway.
Okay, how was the train?
Heavy.
We did Midway. You know, we felt, so Denver, we did Indianapolis.
They said that's good.
Now that's good. And it's in the park. It's less money. Yeah, you just want to stay there. Yeah, it was a little over a drive and outside of.
But it's nice though.
Oh, beautiful.
You know, if you're fighting, I mean, Midway's not bad. Good evening. The Monday, January 22nd, 2018 Common Council meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by John P. Warren, Chairman of the Potawatomi Band of Potawatomi. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you. Very humbling if you ask. I'm going to speak the original language of the area, Potawatomi, and then I'll translate as best as I can. Well, my name is Shomsonan in Kijita, which might get me to watch out there. You know, wish for this move, you know, wish to see ya. Yon showed him a home that was open going down. Well, when I'm a Shomsonan in Chicago, I toyak. And that may I get no man. I would do Chicago. I would know it go in the gun G E going. Mishko has win. You know, but my twin will eat the top man. I would do Chicago. Coabna, Coabmaag. Mishna, they quack. I'm new Jack non. Kakyajig non. Do you know man, Chicago, I toyak. I asked all, all the helpers, some people call them angels, in our language we call them helpers, in all directions of the earth, to come here today to help us. I also asked the one that created all things to hear our prayers. Not only now, but everything down in the future to hear all those prayers. I also asked the creator of all things to, to watch over our, our women, our children, and all our elders. And that we are happy today for what we have. When we say heal, most people say amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, please bring your cell phones to sign up. Mr. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Broton?
Here.
Councilmember Varner?
Present.
Vice President Davis?
I'm present.
Councilmember Gordy?
Present.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Report on subcommittee minutes, please.
The subcommittee of minutes has inspected the minutes of the January 2nd, 2018 organizational meeting of the South Bend Common Council and the January 8th, 2018 meeting of the council and December 11th as well, and found the meeting minutes to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the subcommittee on minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Special business? None. Reporting from city offices, there's Scrivener's error. I believe the mayor is here in lieu of Susanna Fritzberg. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Appreciate the chance to be with you and I was unable to join at the first meeting of the year. So it's my first chance to wish the council well and say that I'm looking forward to a good 2018 with you. Just got back from the case center. We're vigil for the students watching the night with the scope. And we have to make sure that this year is better than last year. We have to. So there's a moral voice in the community that was pretty clear about three things that I'd like to think we're all unified around. First, this has got to stop. We all know that. We all say that. We repeat it. We've got to keep finding ways to say it and repeat it. The second thing was that anybody who knows anything needs to share what they know about the community. And again, that's true in every case where we have homicide or a serious crime. It's one of the reasons that I'm encouraged by the level of attention to community policing that's going on. These couple of cop events that are going on, efforts to make sure that officers are walking the streets, that they're knocking on doors. And third, that the cycle of violence has to be broken. That it's like a disease. When somebody is affected by it, they are likely to transmit it. And we need to make sure that doesn't happen. So I was impressed by the unity of purpose of everybody who gathered tonight, as happens every time something like this happens. Some things that the city is doing with support from the council that I just want to restate for the record. First of all, the street outreach personnel that the council has funded as part of the outreach budget request have hit the ground, or at least one of those personnel is on the ground now. Again, their function, they're working through goodwill. They're not law enforcement. They're community-based. But they have, I think, the potential to play that role of breaking the cycle of violence by prevention rather than response. Or rather, any kind of response that happens is a way to hide from prevention. We've, we've got to do more. We have more police officers coming online, very encouraged by reports from recruits who were in Indianapolis. And as we've said before, all this has a role to play in making sure that we're viewing ourselves as recruiters to bring people into the police force who are going to do a great job. But I think there's a sense that this is not just a police concern. You could argue that we're fortunate that the number of shootings that happened last year did not lead to more fatalities than it did. I think we all remember what it was like in the 1990s when you sometimes had more than 20 homicides in a year. And we have to do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen again. That's what I have to say about that tonight. A little bit better news concerning the weather. Our streets department was able to take advantage of the fact that it's a little bit warmer today and begin attaching puddles. Unfortunately, we're in a pretty intense freeze thaw cycle, which means that if you have a day like today, moisture gets into the street, that expands, cracks. We can't fully patch puddles right now. We can't fully repair them. We were able to get two crews out, two of what are called hot boxes, which have the asphalt there, and do some fasting, patching as possible. They try to cover the quadrants and then they go to the 311 calls. So folks are reaching out to you, letting know that it really is useful to get that complaint-based input into 311 because they use that to map out. Again, if you have a day like today, they'll try to take advantage and just hit as many of those puddles as they can. We're also getting a lot of calls about State Road 23, whether it's the any portion or the sample portion. Obviously, State Road 23 is a state road, which is something that folks don't always think about. But we know that it is awarded with conditions there and they're committed to addressing that with a proper week date, at least on the sample portion in the year. Had a chance to visit the Fuse Project, which is providing permanent supportive housing. We were upward of 20 people now who were housed there. I recognized at least a couple of folks who have been in Project Warham before, so that's definitely encouraging. And I really appreciate the partnership in the Heritage Foundation and the city that's made that possible. Again, I think there's a need for according to the output of the working group on homelessness, as many as 50 more. That's for permanent supportive housing. But this is a, this is a big leap forward. And we'll continue to watch closely and see what it's able to do, especially looking for impact on reduced pressure on the emergency warming centers and reduce demand for people to be out in encampments as the weather warms up. Just wanted to remind you of some really happy news in terms of city personnel policy, which is that parental leave is now as of January 1st available. And so anybody who's expecting to take advantage of that pro-family policy. Don't know that we've had any takers yet, but as soon as we do, we'll, we'll be able to take care of them. The casino opened last week. I know that some of the council members were able to be there. I'm Johnson Davis, was able to speak. And you can really tell just from talking to the people who are working there how much it'd impact the jobs of that. A reminder that that also, that day that we cut the ribbon, that kind of starts the clock and gives us a year to, when we begin seeing the revenue that comes in. So under the negotiated agreement, it's a minimum of $2 million, split evenly between redevelopment and the general fund, or 2% of the net win, whichever is greater. Look forward to seeing what, what comes with that. Also, 93,000 more seats per year in airline availability going to Detroit and Charlotte, American Airlines. We've been missing American Airlines for about a decade in the South Bend market. It's been one of the big three legacy carriers we didn't have. So having them back is a big deal. It's exciting. We are, as a community, trying now to encourage people to make sure that they use those flights we have in South Bend Airport. Whatever airline it's on, we get the service that we support. And so in particular, I want to remind people that when you do the math, traveling to another airport might look like you're getting a better airfare, but if you factor in parking and time, it may not be such an easy call. But also, we hope that the added competition will mean that fares will be more competitive all around, which is also good. I know there continues to be a lot of interest in the South Shore, so I wanted to let you know that we think we're, we're less than a month away from a econ providing revised study that contains economic impact as well as engineering findings, that we hope will point the way toward a good answer that we can come together around. But after the council passed the resolution asking us to leave no stone unturned, that study was initiated. We're getting pretty close. I can tell you that it looks like all of the study, all of the options that were mentioned are at least technically feasible. Now what we're waiting on is the economic side of the equation so that we really are able to reach a good decision there. I would encourage you, if you haven't already, to have a look at the diversity and inclusion report. The annual purchasing report was just published to the city website. We are at $773,000 in city purchasing spend going to minority-owned business enterprises and 1.2 million going to women-owned business enterprises. That, though, is out of about $100 million in city spending. So the good news would be that we now know what that baseline is. But that baseline is also telling us that we've got a lot of work to do if we want our purchasing to really reflect the business community at large and the community that we're from. And last but not least, wanted to mention that I was very encouraged by the annual report of the PSAP, the 911 Center. We've been through a lot of ups and downs on that, a lot of leadership transitions. We believe under the new director, who's confirmed Ray Schultz as the permanent director, that we're seeing not just the right kind of information, but also the right kind of cross-training that is going to allow us to get to where we can say that the staffing level is truly, fully met. And then we'll be able to know by about June, when they think that everybody will meet that training standard, whether we're doing well with the level of personnel that we've committed to or whether we have to have another conversation about any of those personnel. So look for more in the summer in terms of baseline there. But that was pretty encouraging for myself, Commissioner Castelmi, and Mayor Wood were on board. And last but not least, got an update from folks behind Line Bike. I know some folks are wondering, will Line Bike remain in the winter? We had 10,000 Line Bike rides during the month of December. And I'm still waiting to see some of the rap data, the specific data on this. But Line Bike reported to us that there was no day yet this year, or last year, when nobody used bikes. So I know it's a little hard to believe knowing how cold it was. But that could also be an indication, because I'm guessing you're not riding bikes for fun when it's zero degrees, that we're meeting a need that some people really rely on. And so it's another encouraging development. We do need to have conversations in the community about bike parking. And we'll be talking more about that in the year to come to make sure that people know, as with any new technology, there's a sort of etiquette that develops around it. And we need to make sure people are leading the bikes in responsible places. But so far, very encouraging news on that front. I know I just covered a lot there, so I think I'll just leave it at that and collect any questions or input that members of the council have.
Okay, we'll do two questions each.
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Lori?
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy New Year to you. Now, when the information comes out regarding Ardmore?
Yep.
What is going to be your procedure of disseminating that to the council and to the public? Will we, what would be so the people in Ardmore community would know, be able to ask questions, go back and forth? What's the best way to do that?
So I think we'll probably want two steps. One is releasing information about, releasing the study, that it will come back and everything contained in that so the public can view it. And the other is offering a recommendation on where we're headed. We've got, like I said, a few weeks before the final recommendation comes, so still open for input on how best to structure that so that the community has the right level of participation and is informed at the right time.
Okay. So I think there's some ideas I should have to do that. And also, in terms of the, like, the announcement for American Airlines, this kind of things, is there a way that we could have that kind of notice with the council? Because I was trying to see what time or where I heard it in the news so we can go out there and join, but I didn't, I never could figure out the time.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. And it makes me feel better, the airport did not want to tell me what was going on until the day of the announcement. I think there was some concern about one of the competing airlines getting rid of it or something.
And then somebody else sent out a text anyway from the side.
Yeah, then we all wound up getting scooped by somebody in Charlotte anyway.
Yeah.
So we made it to the airport that there'd be desire for a little more heads up. But I think, again, their, their holding it close was motivated by some competitive concerns with the airlines.
And that's because, you know, as we have things that more, the more advances that we have, especially with those in that because we'd like to, I like personally to go to as many as possible.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
Dr. Wurde?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Joe Brod?
Yeah, thank you for coming. A lot of great things going on, of course, and a terrific summary. Appreciate you coming to do that tonight. Wanted to just piggyback on a couple of things that you had said in terms of information and perhaps looping the council in with the, you know, the different measures underway with regards to the violence and in particular, the youth violence. Maybe a little bit more information going forward in terms of the outreach specifically within the high schools and then also, I was not able, and I don't know if any of my council counterparts had the opportunity to attend some of the, or to the extent, because I know that there are several opportunities, the youth work with regard to violence and, you know, peer-to-peer type things that have been studied and looked at. And I think some of those, you know, might be informative and maybe help, you know, bring about some, you know, action from kind of within, within our own districts and bases. And then the other just thing to pick up on is with regard to the recommendations that were behind the, the funding for, you know, the increased street outreach. Maybe just if we could go back as an administration or as a council to look at the fullness of those and see if there's anything left yet undone or unturned or, you know, not, not quite looked at yet, you know, light of some of these changes as, as incidences occur, if there's anything that's coming to light that may be going back now, since I believe that was about a year ago that that report was generated. I'm just thinking, you know, perhaps there might be something, because I know there was a really, you know, collaborative group behind that. And then similar to that, a little bit, if you could share anything on the lead task, not task force, but sort of the lead initiatives and sort of where we were, you know, if there's any kind of pivoting or changes that have been going on. And I did want to lift up the folks who are going out tomorrow night for the point-in-time count within our community. You know, these, these numbers are, you know, so important to what we do and how we do it and further identification of, you know, it's not just, right, not just a number, but what are the needs? What are the issues? And then how can we, not just as a city respond, an administration, may I say, but more so, you know, collectively, again, as a community because of, you know, just the breadth of some of the issues that people are dealing with as well as, you know, their networks of families and friends who care. So, and I just really do applaud, the Fuse Center is an amazing facility. And I'm very hopeful, you know, going forward, you know, I think we're about at the halfway point. Am I correct on that in terms of?
Yes, there were a few interviews to take place on Friday. If all went to plan, then we'd be at 26 right now, I think. So getting pretty close to goal.
And I think that's ahead of some of the projections, correct? So, I mean, I'm very excited to hear that. So I actually wanted to comment on that. But, so again, thank you for coming. And the leadership on the PSAP Center, I think we all know how much that is critical to supporting what I see as our primary function as a, as city government. And so I'm very pleased with the actions that have taken place within, in particular, the last, the last quarter of last year. So thanks for your leadership and the, as well as councils in terms of, you know, budgeting and staying on top of that, I think.
Yep.
You know, we've worked hard on that, I think, to push that and up-tempo that into a good and strong direction. So last but not least, the Line Bike thing, that is shocking. Shocking being an avid bike, bike cyclist. Who knew or who would ever imagine that number in December? That, that could be an all-time record for the city itself and not just for the month of December. So, and I mean, all time, all season. So that's, that's pretty cool. So congratulations, a lot of great things going forward. Really appreciate your time coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your two questions.
Oh, sorry.
You're fine. I think you did all for everybody.
She took mine.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Regina?
Thank you. I'll especially look forward to working with city administration on this concept of reducing violence by building peace. Looking forward to having some conversations and hopefully inviting you to some of our community relations committee meetings. We'll be having a share on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got nothing.
I got nothing.
So, thank you, Pete, for coming. Appreciate it, ma'am. And representing the city is?
No.
Oh, mayor, the state of?
I think we have a date. I don't think we've confirmed the venue.
March 13th?
No. March 13th.
March 13th.
March 13th. And as usual, we'll schedule the statutory address on the financial, financial piece during the month of February.
Right. Last meeting in February.
Yeah, we have that one down too. I think it's the 20th.
So yeah, as soon as we get a venue locked down, we'll put that out. But please save that date for March 13th. We'll have a lot of interesting things to share.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Representative Laura O'Sullivan will be here. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to rise of committee hall.
So long.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an option to speak either in favor or against. Your comments will be limited to five minutes per ordinance. With that, would the city clerk please read 8917?
8917. Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 3, Commercial/Mixed-Use District to revise permitted uses and development standards.
Could I entertain a motion to continue the zoning annexation for 212?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 0118?
0118. Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 2, Administration, and chapter 6, Building of the South Bend Municipal Code by removing zoning administration and area board of zoning appeals from the responsibilities of the building department and removing associated fees.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the zoning annexation committee met this afternoon. And due to half of us being there, we have to bring this with no recommendation at this time.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Ayoka Page, Building Department at 125 South Lafayette, Suite 100. These changes are some of the final touches to the transition of the zoning administration duties to and management of the area board of zoning appeals from the building department to the area planning commission staff. The first is to remove some of the defined zoning administrative responsibilities from the building department. And the second part, to adjust the building department's fee schedule so that it doesn't reflect certain duties that we don't take care of anymore. Mostly the area board of zoning appeals, special exceptions, variances, and some other zoning documents that we used to provide.
Are there any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council. What's your opinion?
I'd like to move to send 0118 to full council favor, would?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 0218?
0218. Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of the General Obligation Bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith on and on account of issuance of bonds and all matters related thereto.
I would like to make a motion for just purpose of the public hearing. If we could hear Bill 0218 and Bill 0318 together.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 0318?
0318. Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating proceeds of the City of South Bend General Obligations Bonds, Series 2, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on these two bills. But due to the lack of having a form, we have to send these two bills to the council with no obligation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen of council, my name is Steve Cox. I'm in South Bend.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, councilman Steve Cox, I'm the South Bend fire chief of offices twelve twenty, South Michigan Street. Basically, both of these bills are for us, in order for us to be able to fund bond to fund building fire station number nine of Rockfish Walk Avenue and replace the building that was built in nineteen twenty-six. We've had multiple discussions with council regarding this budgeting process. I also have Randy Rampol, uh, I'm sorry, Randy Rampol and Herschel Fryerson from Pro and Varner's over here as well to speak to the financial aspect of this. However, if the council would bear with me for one moment. Dr. Varner asked a couple of questions in committee that I feel like I need to clarify on the record. So, Dr. Varner asked about the square footage of the actual fire station. And I erroneously stated that it was eight thousand square feet. It is projected to be ten thousand square feet. We also estimated the building to be built at approximately three hundred and thirty dollars per square foot. So that hopefully helps satisfy some of those numbers that we were discussing in committee. Additionally, the classroom building that is attached to this bond for the new, or for our training center is being estimated at five hundred thousand dollars at a hundred and ten dollars a square foot. As we stated, that is anticipated to be a prefabed building in order for us to be able to draw down the cost of building that building. Additionally, some utilities that we would normally put into an actual building, as we talked about in committee, we try to minimize that aspect of it because of the energy cost associated. So I just want to make sure that those are clarified in, on the record. And additionally, I did mention that we also had a three hundred, three hundred and ten thousand dollar contingency filled into the bond as well on advice from council to ensure that any kind of issues that might pop up during construction, we'd be able to address those on the fly. So I hope that answered some of those questions, Dr. Varner, that you brought to the committee.
I think the number is a little closer.
After I left, I started thinking about that and I thought, I better check that. So I contacted our architects. So those are confirmed. With Herschel and Randy, they confirmed that as well. So. But we're happy to answer any other questions associated with it.
Sure. Any questions from council for Chief Cox or bound counsel? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council. For separate recommendations, please start with zero two eighteen.
I approve a motion to bill zero two eighteen, we sent to full council with favorable renovation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Do we entertain a motion for zero three eighteen, please?
Move to send zero three eighteen to full council favorably.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Entertain a motion to rise and resolve from the committee of the whole?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. You know what? I'm gonna do it just because it was moved.
I know, I know. Thank you, thank you. He didn't follow through. He didn't follow through. Y'all have to sit and follow through.
Here, here. Anyway, sorry, moving forward. Full council is now back in session. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading, third reading to zero one eighteen?
Zero one eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, administration and chapter six, building of the South Bend municipal code by removing zoning administration and area board of zoning appeals from the responsibilities of the building department and removing all associated fees.
Move for the passage of bill zero one.
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorti?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Zero two one eight.
Zero two one eight. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two. Sorry, I'm reading the wrong line. Zero two one eight. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of issuance of bonds and all matters related thereto.
Motion for passage.
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorti?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Zero three one eight.
Zero three one eight. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating the proceeds of the city of South Bend general obligation bonds, series two thousand eighteen.
Motion for passage. Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorti?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolutions, would you please give reading to eighteen oh two, please?
Eighteen oh two. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, rescinding resolution four six six three dash seventeen and approving a memorandum of agreement between the city of Indianapolis, Indiana, acting through the Indianapolis Fire Department and the city of South Bend, Indiana regarding Indiana Task Force One.
As our committee chair and vice chair were not present, I acted as chair for the Health and Public Safety Committee meeting. We've heard the issue, but without a quorum, we've sent this forward with no recommendation. So, to your presenter.
Yes. Good evening. L.A. Anderson, Assistant City Attorney Office on the twelfth floor of this building. So as we discussed earlier, this is sort of a procedural remedy that we're taking. Back in August, the council approved the resolution, this resolution four six six three dash one seven, approving memorandum of agreement between the city of Indianapolis Department of Public Safety and the city of South Bend acting on behalf of the fire department for the South Bend Fire Department's involvement in Indiana Task Force One, which is an emergency response, emergency response task force under the Department of Homeland Security. Unfortunately, after we executed the agreement on our end, we sent it back down to Indianapolis and Indianapolis responded that they had dissolved their Department of Public Safety. At that point, I got involved and negotiated back with the attorney, one of the assisting corporation council for Indianapolis. A new agreement which just essentially substitutes the city of Indianapolis in all places where it said Indianapolis Department of Public Safety. So there aren't any substantive revisions, but we want to send it back through to council the same way that it went through in August.
Great. Chief Cox, do you briefly want to add anything?
Yes. My name is Steve Cox, our chief of the South Bend Fire Department, offices at twelve twenty, South Michigan Street. This is a wonderful opportunity for our department to be able to take part in not only training, but deployment activities in regards to natural disasters, man-made disasters throughout the country. With that comes tunnel dollars for training, deployment assets and backfill funding, which isn't typical of previous deployments funded by the state. So in essence, what we're getting here is an entire package of pre-deployment training, equipment, and then backfill overtime coverage from the federal government anytime you do some individual disaster. But more importantly for us operationally is our folks actually get to take part in major events throughout the country and be able to bring that experience back here and be able to employ those experiences here in their response activities. All the way around, it's going to be a fantastic package for us.
Great. Council, any questions?
What happened to their Department of Public Safety, is it just a no-pleasure thing or what?
I don't know all about the internal restructuring, but I know that sometime, I think at the end of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, they made a decision that they were no longer going to have that department.
I actually believe that they have a new mayor and have a part.
Right.
No public safety office. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up, thank you, gentlemen, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak? In favor of eighteen oh two, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against eighteen oh two, please come to the podium. Seeing none, turn it back to council?
With the adoption, the dissolution, the second.
Second.
Great. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorti?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Great, thank you. First reading, please. Zero six one eight?
Zero six one eight. First reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. Street vacation, Western Avenue from Francis Street East, two hundred and forty-one feet to Prairie Street. The first north-south alley east of Francis Street between Western Avenue on the north to the first east-west alley of Southwestern Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Entertain a motion to send to public portion for a reading vacation for two twelve.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all. Any unfinished business? Randy Kelly? Any new business?
I would like to make a note that on February the twenty-second, at the Charles Martin Center, we've been asked to present a form on the impact of the synthetic drugs that has, you know, touched our community. We have some very interesting statistics in regards for the impact that it's had coming from Beacon Health. So that's going to be a Charles Martin, it's going to be a panel. The chief of police is going to be a member. A police will be a member of the panel, representative from Beacon Health along with other community leaders.
Do you have your time again?
It's going to be from sixty-eight, sixty-eight, March, February the twenty-second at Charles Martin Center.
Okay.
I'll give you more information in the flyer I'll share with the council.
Just one real quick note, at the New Northwest Neighborhood Association Center on February second, they are going to look at Riverside Drive in Hudson. That's a very bad, kind of crazy little corner. Looking, making an improvement with that. They're going to have a public meeting. We sent it out to the neighbors around that area, but it is a public meeting on February second, starting at five thirty. So. Anything else, new business? Nope. Seeing any? We'll turn to privilege of the floor.
This needs a city still.
This is privileged floor. Individuals which address the common council must state their name and residential address. Individuals, limited to three minutes only, maximum time portion for this meeting is thirty minutes. Individuals may address only issues which the city has jurisdiction. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics that occurred tonight on the agenda. The common council president may assign the topic raised to individuals during the privilege of floor and appropriate council members or request city clerk to contact members of the city administration for review and comment. All topics are assigned, shall be responded to next regularly scheduled council meeting. Mr. Furlitt will give you a three-minute time and give you a thirty-second exit warning. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is DeKeston, four twenty, Kennedy Drive, South Bend. First thing I'd like to say is the city has funded a hundred thousand dollars in conjunction with work one for a transitions program which helps people upgrade their careers. That money runs out, so I know I'm starting really early, but please consider upping that a budget. I think it's great for a city to boost up people who need extra training. So the hundred thousand dollars, find out where it runs out and perhaps boost that the budget. I think we should stay on top of head start funding. I understand that you guys don't fund that, but you do have community outreach and if there is an issue with head start funding, I would hope that you reach out to constituents and work on that. In twenty seventeen, we had a hundred shootings and over sixteen dead. We need to work on that. I went to the neighborhood watch meeting. There's two hundred block captains. We'd like twelve hundred block captains. So I'd like you to reach out to constituents and see if you might like to participate and consider seeing if you can work on this issue. I think it'd be great to have a couple of different kinds of programs. I don't know if anger management programs are still continuing in the schools, but I think you could have de-escalation violence workshops in the neighborhoods, teaching people how to de-escalate a situation, giving them actual tools if they're in a situation as a citizen, a way to perhaps help things. We might want to consider having a program, like a TV-type documentary that shows what happens when someone's shot. What happens in the ER. My dad's a doctor. I got to actually unfortunately watch those things. I think it has an impact when you actually see it. And also show the ripple it has on the families. When each person's shot, it probably affects at least three hundred people. I'd like to see training on assisting a shooting victim. We've had a hundred shootings in South Bend just as we help people understand how to help someone who's having a heart attack or a stroke. I think it's time to add programs that help someone who's bleeding, how to keep them from bleeding out. The person that's right there, you can bleed out under three minutes.
So you have thirty seconds.
As great as the fire department and the response team is, if our citizens know how to stop bleeding in the moment, we have time for the emergency people to get there. I know that our zoning, Councilwoman Scott, I may be wrong with the figures, but we have like sixty percent rentals in the neighborhoods. Is that correct? I don't know. Something like that. I researched.
Your time is up.
Talk about that later.
And we haven't, I mean.
All right, thank you. Next name and address.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. The reason I came tonight, there's a lot of community people that are quite concerned. I believe pretty much every council member at one point or another, our mayor, our police chief, and tons of community members have all marched in the streets for equality, equal rights for everybody under many circumstances. It was brought to my attention by several citizens that there was an arrest made over Martin Luther King holiday. We all know on the holiday, the courts are closed. The person arrested was released on the holiday, apparently per a judge, with zero bond from OWI that involved an accident. There were approximately twenty other people incarcerated the same day. Those other twenty people did not get the same privilege to be released on their own recognances or even technically bond out on that day. They had to sit in jail until the next day till the court was open. A lot of people thought that was unfair treatment, wasn't equal treatment. A young lady was arrested, I believe, the next day on an OWI charge. Same exact charge. She had to post a five hundred dollar bond to get out of jail. I'm the initial person who got out on the holiday when the courts were closed, didn't have to post a bond at all. So we all march in the streets about equality, but in our justice system here in our community, it appears things aren't equal. Got into such a heated debate on social media, on Facebook, that someone from Facebook happened to pick out my post on the community page out of the billions of posts every day and mysteriously deleted my post. When I contacted the news media and said, hey, look, overnight there was a hundred and twenty comments on this post that got deleted. People had questions, they want answers why this person got out, these other people couldn't get out, why it was a different situation the next day. And the news media didn't want to cover it for some reason. I don't understand why. Under the Constitution, we're all supposed to be treated equally and fairly when it comes to our justice and judicial system.
You have thirty seconds.
That's good. We had a judge's wife who chimed in and flat-out answered a point-blank question. Yes, people are treated differently based on the amount of money they have and the people they know in this community. That's wrong. I think you guys need to look into this and find out why people are being treated differently. Because if you don't want to look into it and fix it, you got no business marching in the streets for equal rights for anybody.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.